All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:06 PM. And I hereby call to order the April 2022 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Clerk Bruno, Village Clerk's report, please.
Yes, in the past month, there were three tables that were processed. 569 trash bags were sold. And the deputy clerk continues to help in the office when she can and also is assisting planning and zoning boards.
Thank you very much. Do we have any upcoming events?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We're going to have, Tivoli's going to have a rubbery earth day cleanup. We're seeking volunteers, a bit of perusal of the village. And because we have all these walkers, we don't really have a lot of junk in the woods, so it should be a quick job. We're going to give out plastic, trash bags and grabbers. And we have vests for people to wear to keep them safe. And we will be meeting at the gazebo at...
Just outside this building?
At 10:00 AM on Saturday to organize this structure.
Wonderful. Thank you to the Rotary.
Well, and actually, we've been putting some mileage on the grabbers this week because this May 7th is the either 10th or 11th Hudson River Sweep put on by Riverkeeper. So that'll be down at the water hunt from noon to 4-ish on Saturday.
Okay, so we'll do the streets and we'll do the water hunt.
Well, and actually, the grabbers are going to do triple duty because on Sunday, they're going to go over to Red Hook where they're going to do their thing up on, you know, within town.
Yep.
On Sunday.
All right.
So. Place is going to be spotless.
Take it around.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Trustees, we have March 16th regular meeting minutes, March 23rd special meeting minutes, April 13th public hearing minutes, and workshop minutes. Any finders? If you have a chance to put these over.
I'm over.
That was the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Ezraudi, any discussion? I just want to thank clerk for keeping up with all the evenings. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the treasurer's report for this month. Out of the general fund, we spent $91,990.79. And that number is also our grand total, 91,990.79. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Baldino, followed by Mangeri, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the zoning report. Trustee Ezraudi, please.
Yes, our code enforcement officer has been busy doing the work of code enforcement, especially with fire inspections. So he has reviewed 11 building permits, issued nine, addressed, received six complaints and investigated all of them. Identified eight zoning property maintenance violations. Issued no appearance tickets, no municipal searches, and no inspections with the exception that he has addressed 31 fire inspections. And if you watch this meeting on a regular basis, that's the first time in a long time, but we're very glad that he does this, just to make sure that our buildings that have more than one failure in them or that are commercial and invite the public in are safe.
Yeah, places of public assembly. And some of them are inspected every three years, some of them are inspected more frequently depending on their category.
Right. He has also done some code enforcement training, which is provided by, it's his organization, right, C3? And the total is that he has brought in fees for building permits, $6,249, and for fire inspections, $5,900. So it's a nice balance that helps to deflate the cost of hiring.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. Now's the time we invite public comment on agenda items. And we have some special guests with us tonight. Lori Urban is here and got in touch with me the other day. I had something she wanted everyone in Tivoli to know about, so we're very grateful you came and happy to give you the first, our first agenda item, so please, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me on the agenda with two days' notice. I appreciate that. I'm just here to let you guys know that we have a new program going on at Town Recycle Yard. I'm speaking to you as a member of your Conservation Advisory Council. So we've been thinking and talking a long time about having something available in the town so that people could recycle their food scraps into compost. And what we ended up deciding to do is a pilot program that kicks off next Saturday, April 29th, and will go for six months through the end of October. We're contracting with the O-Zone, which is, I think, lovely because it's a local Red Hook business. And some of you may know Amelia. And we are doing a very simple, low-tech program which involves contracting with her to have four 32-gallon roller bins at the site at the recycle yard, which will be swapped out weekly for new containers. So she's going to come, provide them, take them over to Up Rock where they're going to be, the food scraps will be made into compost. And there are two-fold benefits of this. It benefits us in that what is created and what is not created. So what is created is the food scraps are turned into compost, which is a nutrient-rich supplement for soil. And what is not created is methane by having the food scraps go to landfill. So it's a win-win situation. And what we're hoping is that people, you know, there's fairly high traffic through the recycle yard on Saturdays and Wednesdays. We're hoping that people who come regularly will just incorporate it into their routine when they put their paper and their cardboard in their car and whatever else they're bringing, they'll just put the food scraps in, literally just open the bin and throw them in. We're also hoping to introduce maybe people who have a particular interest in composting to come to the recycle yard and for the first time and see some of the other things that are offered there. So we're very excited about the pilot. I reached out downstairs to your library and the librarian very nicely said that she would put some, a couple flyers up for us. And we're at the getting out the word phase of the operation. One other point I'd like to make is that when we're going to do some tabling, like at Apple Blossom and then also at the Recycle Yard Repair Cafe, which is this weekend, and ask people if they want to sign up to be hard scrabble scrappers. So this is a totally free program. There's no, you don't have to sign up, there's no fee associated, but if you'll give us your email, we'd like to have a group of individuals to engage in a conversation. We're going to send out monthly updates, provide some more details about the program, maybe take questions from people to get, you know, kind of build like a little cadre of people that are invested in the process. And also might do a survey with us at the end of the six-month program when we're going to step up over the winter, see how it went, how many people participated, how the volume of what was composted, and, you know, decide on the next steps from there.
Just out of curiosity, how did you negotiate a price with O-Zone? And did the, is it village or the town?
The town.
Did they cover the cost of the composting?
So yes, the town is covering the cost. And O-Zone, actually, it's interesting, they have a pilot program also going on in Rhinebeck in their village where people do have to sign up and they have to pay a nominal fee, like six or eight dollars a month to participate. So Amelia actually has two models going, a fully funded by the municipality model, which we are participating in, which is based on how many, you know, containers you want on a monthly basis. We're, you know, we're starting out with four. Hopefully, they'll get filled up, but we didn't want to go full bore, you know, not knowing what the interest was. But then she also, so she has kind of like a two-method approach. In Rhinebeck, the individuals pay a subsidized amount and the town, the village, so the town kicks in a bit to subsidize the program.
And is the town able to use the composted, are you using that in parks, et cetera?
So excellent question. So the R are heading back at the end of the program, a token amount of compost, probably one 32-gallon bin. And the idea there really isn't to use it into town, but to have it to give out to people, you know, in October, maybe the first couple of weeks in October. So we want to, you know, kind of make it full circle for people. But that, you know, if it goes beyond a pilot, maybe we'll think of something, you know, more concrete and substantial. But at this point, it's just, we're going to, and the date hasn't even been particularly set, but we will have some compost available at the end for people who have participated.
Okay, good. Thank you for doing that.
Well, we're compost people. We are compost people. And I did bring, for you, Robyn, I have just a few flyers and some information about composting. And I have some of these little quarter sheets, so maybe when people come to get garbage tickets, if you, if you want, if you can, and if you want, you could just, you know, it's an easy way to say, hey, you can maybe cut down on the volume of your garbage with...
And make them garbage tags?
Yeah. Right. And if you want, if you find that you want more than, I can of course get them, but I just give this little sample packet for you.
Does your packet contain the information about this pilot program? Because I would offer to plastic apps or residents on our email list to let them know about it as well.
Yeah, so I could send you...
Just if you've got a blurb on the dates and when, you know.
Yeah, why don't I send you the digital flyer tomorrow? That would be wonderful.
Sure. We've got 500 people on our email list.
Great.
So it starts on the 29th and then, and that's a Saturday. And after that, it's every Wednesday and Saturday you can bring your stuff?
Exactly. So the bins will just be on the side of the main building at the recycle yard and during regular hours, which as you said, is Wednesday and Saturday, will just be available unlocked and people can just put things in when they come.
And are there any rules on what kind of food scraps? Like, can you bring the chicken bones and the eggshells and everything? Or is there any restrictions?
Right. So any food scraps whatsoever. Because it's going to a commercial composting facility, the bones are okay, meat is okay. And actually, in what I gave you there, there is, there's a color kind of do's and don'ts, which I can also send to you. But it's really, it's not, it's very simple, you know, like it's basically food. No paper, no plastic, not even, they don't want the compostable cups or straws, that kind of thing we want to keep out too. If people have a little container at home and they want to line it with a paper bag, that's okay, you know, they can just throw the whole thing in. But apart from that, we're trying to keep it strictly food. Dairy products are okay, meat and bones, all of that.
Great. Thank you. That's exciting. I hope the pilot goes very, very well.
Okay. Really appreciate your time and putting in at the beginning here. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yep, thanks. Nice evening. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the adoption of the reorganizational package. And for fans of the Village Board of Trustees, this is actually the reorganizational meeting. It's been a number of years since, you know, this event used to be an event and we would have, sorry, cake, sorry, and citizen awards, and we try and fill the room and do the whole thing, but pandemic has put that great tradition on hold and we're still doing it. And we had a delayed election, right? So we had two of these in a six-month period at one point, and it's been really screwy for a couple of years. So here's another nice little reorg meeting, pandemic style.
Cakeless.
Cakeless. I know you weren't. Thinking about backwards parking, how much cake that's worth?
Oh!
A great organizational package. We went over this in the workshop. This is all the appointments, all the officers, trustee, department responsibilities, our meeting schedule. Everything's largely the same as far as that goes. Citizens of Tivoli, your village board meets second and third Wednesdays, second Wednesdays at 7:00, third Wednesdays at 6:00, and then at 7:00. I'm very excited that we have managed to fill out the planning board. We're going to have a full five-member board plus two alternates, which has not been the case for some time. I'm very excited to welcome Amy Breedlove, JP Ward, and Bill Schilling to that body. And also, I want to congratulate and thank Lisa Schwartzbaum for becoming our new chairperson. And I very deeply want to thank Mike Balesi for his many years as chair of the planning board. A lot happened, took a lot of time, and some of those projects were pretty tough to go through, and I'm very grateful for his service, so thank you, Mike. And we're close on the ZVA. We've got one alternate seat, so if you're interested in sitting on the ZVA as an alternate, please reach out to me. And we also now, we talked recently about the Climate Smart Communities Task Force and how this village is going to try to achieve bronze certification through the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program. And the task force is going to have our first meeting this Tuesday to try and get organized. I've got nine great people who've expressed interest, so hopefully we can find a time of the month when those nine people can meet and we'll be working again with Michelle Book from the Cornell Cooperative Extension. So very excited about having that happen this year. Any other questions or comments on the reorganizational package before I ask for a motion? All right. Is there a motion to adopt the reorganizational package? Is there a second?
Second.
I also want to thank Clerk Bruno for working on this with me. There's always a lot of edits and iterations and calls. Sure you want to sort it again? Okay, good. Hang on a second, quick.
I'd just like to observe that you have that crest up front here, and despite the fact that we eliminated one water tower in the new winter, we didn't have to change the disguise.
Wasn't that covered? Yeah, we didn't have to change the hats or anything. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. That's the reorganizational package. Next, we have a couple resolutions relating to reorg. So this one is our official newspaper, Kingston Freeman, meeting times and dates, depository M&amp;T Bank, petty cash, $100. Mileage reimbursement rate, 58.5 cents per mile. Which positions are covered by the blanket bond, check signing, privileges, authorizing the treasurer to pay routine claims for utilities, postage, freight, et cetera. And our procurement policy is still quite up to date. We added the best value last year, so I will rewrite the memorandum of who has what thresholds of purchasing as far as DPW, et cetera. So that's the reorg resolution. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution relating to the annual reorganization? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Ezraudi. Do a little call, please. Deputy Mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangeri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next, we have the readoption of the Code of Ethics. Board of Trustees readopses this every year. We reread it at least every year. We did this in a workshop a couple weeks ago, and this is also upon pointing out, has been updated to reflect contemporary use of pronouns. It was very traditional, whatever you want to say. So it feels like a better fit for our time and our board, so. Is there a motion to readopt the Code of Ethics?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor, major?
Right.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangeri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Code of Ethics is readopted. And the last agenda item is the adoption of the 2022-23 budget. We've been working on this for several months. We are once again staying under the tax cap, very excited about. And we had our public hearing last week. And as budget officer and with the participation of the trustees, I feel this is the best representation we can make of, you know, expected revenues, some of which we know for sure, some of which we have no idea what's going to happen in the next 12 months. We make our best guess, and the same thing with expenditures, so. With that, anything else anyone would like to say about the budget before we pass this budget?
I just think there was some fundamental issues that were addressed, particularly the issue of having sufficient DPW to do the tasks that we have in hand and taking advantage of some experienced, well-qualified people to fill those positions, which I was really excited about. And the fact that we were able to make a contribution to the firehouse expansion in this budget was also very gratifying.
Absolutely. Well said.
It's always surprising that, you know, the amusement valley can be run on the rather paltry amount.
Somehow every year we get through.
Sweep by, so.
I always get scared looking up 10 years down the road, but somehow every year we get through. And, you know, the thing that gives me that fear really more than anything is the state of health insurance in this country.
Yes.
When those costs go up, you know, last year it's been 4% to 6%, but a couple years before that, it was 11% to 16%.
25%.
Same here. 15%. You know, believe me, we don't want to be raising taxes 16%. It's, I hope this country can figure it out because it will continue to squeeze little places like this, but we've made it through another year, so onward.
For less than three Lamborghinis, we're crossing.
For less than three Lamborghinis. Maybe we can borrow Lamborghini, sell it quick. We'll park it on Montgomery Street backwards. Is there a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 final budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangeri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And we have our budget. Thank you very much, trustees. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, May 18th, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the Historic Watson Peister Hall. And we have our regular workshop on May 11th, right here in this room at 7:00 PM. And I'll remind everyone, we're going to be joined by folks from the school, from our school district, who will be telling us about their budget. It's usually the superintendent and their chief financial officer, so those are always interesting meetings. And as you know, the school tax is by far the largest portion of the property taxes we pay around here, so if you're interested in knowing what they're up to, May 11th, 7 o'clock. Moving on to trustee reports. Trustee Ezraudi, please.
We had a chance in the last couple events to review the investment policy and processes with the investment manager for the Land Service Award Program for the fire company. And that was a useful and interesting conversation. We also, at the beginning of this year, paid out, I think it was $29,000 in benefit in awards to three firefighters who had reached 65. And that's what that program is for, is to retain people, to retain especially people who've been trained for a long time. And the fire company has grown in that period due to the fact that we have great leadership and enthusiasm about the new firehouse. So that's what...
Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. Trustee Baldino?
So we're looking at the corporate board for the number of parking against the wrong direction, backwards parking. So it's only been four tickets this month. I was on this report for backwards parking, but we know there was three today at Montgomery. So that's a $45 fine if you parked in the wrong direction on a prominent street, so just FYI. So we had $2,110 in fines. We had $286 in surcharges, $0 in civil fees, for a total of $2,396.
Thanks, Robyn. So a lot of over, you know, winter parking laws and several stop sign violations and blocking a fire hydrant. All right. Deputy Mayor, major?
Yes. So you have noticed it's been raining a lot lately, and the Tivoli Free Library can help you out with that because along would be fantastic workshops and events that are always going on. You can check that out at tivolilibory.org. They also have museum passes, so you could go up to Mass Moka or to the New York State Firefighters Museum in Hudson or Hudson River Maritime Museum in Kingston or any, there's also the New York State Empire Pass, which will get you into state parks and recreational facilities, and those are good for three days. So take advantage of them. In terms of events at historic sites, Clermont has a family workshop going on this weekend, Saturday at 1:00 o'clock, and it's called "The Soothing Power of calendula." And anybody who doesn't know, the calendula is a lovely little flower in the daisy family, and apparently it is incredibly versatile. You can eat it, you can make, you know, balms and lotions and all sorts of things out of it, and that's what this workshop is about. So Saturday at 1:00 PM at the cottage. And in terms of the bay, the canoe lodge is in, and it's so nice to have it there because the mud is outrageous. But this dock, it's amazing. It's doing exactly what it was engineered to do, which is to not sit on the mud at low tide and imperil the forest line stickleback who calls that area home. So get your boats and get out out there. Watch out for the ticks because they are nasty. They are, they're, ugh, foul. And again, May 7th, the annual river cleanup, noon to 4:00 PM. So come on down and let's pick up some garbage. Nice.
Thank you. And trustee Mangeri?
I'd like to report that our annual egg hunt was back this year.
Yeah.
And it was very good. I had like the most wonderful support from the fire department, like all the kids had a good time, everybody was smiling. It was fun, and we plan for bigger and better next year.
Yeah, so that's great. We had, I think, almost 60 children.
Yeah, that's what I was saying about 50 to 60 kids.
And we're dodging the weather forecast, and our fabulous fire department opened up the firehouse, pulled the trucks out, and then we got to spread the hay all inside the firehouse. And it was really, really fun.
It was. It was a lot of fun. And as soon as I got home, it started to pour.
Yeah, exactly.
But it was great because Mother Nature stayed away, so it was still an indoor event, but there was also people like outside.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was really good to see a lot of people. I met a lot of like my neighbors. I was like, hey, nice to meet you.
Great.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you to Mary Honsbach also, who helped. I have just the vestige of my temporary tattoo left.
Yes, Mary was great. She was helping me out. That was awesome.
Yeah, so great fun. The Tivoli Department of Public Works has been out and about trying to get this place put in the shape after a long winter, and they've been trimming a lot, grooming a lot. They're going to be doing quite a replanting of the four corners, the main intersection over the next two days. They got hammered, particularly that little water main that we put through last year tore up two of them pretty badly, so we're looking forward to that. I want to thank the wonderful Jackie Zatko, who just donated three little forsythia plants that will be going behind Eleanor Roosevelt over in our little tiny park there on Woods Road. And there's more for DPW to do, I suppose. And I just found out today that we are going to be able to bring back a very popular event in Tivoli after, I think we've had for three years, two years. And that's the August Cleanup Day. This is, I have no more details yet, but we're going to do it, so you'll get more details soon. Mid-August, there's a fee, $40, $45 or so, and you can put out all your stuff on the curb, and the village organizes this, we bring in an outside hauler, and they will go around and take away your stuff. And there's a nice list of, you know, tires are extra, mattresses are extra.
Four months to plan for.
Yes. I hope to have those details out within a month and people can start planning and have all summer to inch the stuff out of the garage, towards the driveway, and eventually out to the curb. So look for that coming up in August. Also in August, we will have the Tibbely Children's Recreation Camp. The County Board of Health just gave us all the forms and literature we need to work on. I'm very excited. Trustee Mangieri will be working with me this year to get that set up. We've had quite a bit of interest. We will be doing signups by the end of May. So I won't have much for you before then, but it will be in August, the camp. And signups, you can check in after, say, May 20th or so. And we should be ready to start doing signups. And.
So, excuse me, done for two weeks, right?
Yep, two weeks. I'm not sure which two weeks exactly it's going to be because I think the first of August, a Monday or, I don't know, Saturday. The August dates are a little weird this year. And coming up June 17, 18, 19 is our Sasquatch Centennial Celebration that we've been working on with our Giant Sprolling Committee. I've seen some people have already ordered their schwag from the online store. I've seen a couple of t-shirts around the village. I've got a coffee mug at home now that I got. And we are planning a three-day thing. We're going to have, the program for that should be going out after May 1st. We still want to nail down exact times. But broad strokes, Friday night, there's going to be a story slam. Saturday and Sunday, there's going to be yoga in the park in the morning. Saturday, there's going to be a big parade in the afternoon. Saturday evening, there will be a block party downtown at the Mason's Hall and North Road. We're going to have a band, we're going to have DJs, we're going to have a beer garden. And that's Saturday. And then Sunday, after you've done more yoga, then we're going to, St. Paul is going to do a special historic service and I think some tour of the cemetery, perhaps?
I think there will be a tour of the cemetery, yeah.
Okay, then there's going to be a historic talk. Delivered by.
Try to stop me.
The Village Historian. And Sunday, 4 o'clock, everyone's going to walk the loop. We'll be invited to, that should be fun. And then Sunday night, in the park, we're going to have a Bring Your Own picnic with some music under the pavilion and then fireworks at dark. So 150 years since.
We started paying taxes.
We started paying taxes and started putting in sidewalks and started trying to be a little democratic polity where people can participate in self-government. So very exciting thing to celebrate that for 150 years.
I just have one question. Will there be any lawnmowers in the parade?
I was just going to ask that.
The parade committee, Lisa Sanders and Samantha Hunt are organizing what they're calling the Roll and Stroll.
The Roll and Stroll.
And I think that's sort of where.
So it may not.
Might get pushed over. Probably not like a gasmole. But the idea is decorate your bike, decorate your wagon, decorate your tricycle, wheelchair, and roll and stroll.
Nice.
And we're going to have a number of fire companies in the parade. Hopefully, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Legion. We're talking about doing former mayor's walking. Kenny Meaglin Rally, I told him to bring the biggest piece of farm equipment he could find. It would be really fun. And some other things, so.
Nice, maybe as like a, I mean, combine or something like that.
There's going to be some musical acts in the parade as well, hopefully. And Ralph just told me they're going to put the 25 Maxim up on a trailer and drag it through because this is our first motorized vehicle in the village, right, 1925? It's not running right now.
First motorized fire truck in the village.
Okay, there was a motorized something else before that?
Yeah, Patrick Moore was the first man to own a car in the village and the first man to die in a car accident.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
But that, his first car wasn't owned by the village.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Like the Lamborghini?
Right.
Okay, all right. So Sasquatch Centennial, June 17, 18, and 19. Trustees, anything else before we adjourn?
Well, we're going to represent better than we did in the September parade, right? It's more than, it's going to be more than 3D.
The golf cart has been tossed here, right, trustee Mangieri?
Oh, they'll represent.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing.
Yes.
If I may.
You may, please.
You've talked about some of the upcoming events. I'd like to just add in about the open house at the firehouse this weekend from 10 to 2. There's going to be, it's a recruit New York, it's a New York-based recruitment, retention at the open house. We've got the trailer over there for, you know, for the kids to go through. There'll be food available. So 10 to 2, come in, take a tour.
Saturday?
Correct.
Yay?
And there will be, you know, there'll be a lot of us there to talk about the department, obviously, positions, and not to mention the cattle camping.
Great, wonderful. And that's the smokehouse for the kids to go through, right? Fire safety stuff. Excellent, thanks for reminding us of that.
I have a question, actually, Robert. Will that kind of stuff be at the Tibbely Sasquatch Centennial? Like the smokehouse, like it kind of always was like that in the past, right?
Well, we brought it, we brought it to the park for our little Tibbely days we've had in recent years. I'm not sure, we'll have to talk to them.
We haven't, that hasn't been talked about. About what our. Well, the organization will be.
Yeah, they're going to be helping us, firefighters will be helping us with like parade control and closing roads. And then, you know, they're going to be in the parade and there's going to be a lot going on. So, but we'll see, maybe.
Moving parts and pieces and people.
Yes. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? That was made by Baldino and seconded by the deputy mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
743, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks, very much.